Welcome to a Elizabeth Township planning commission meeting. It's December twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. Can we all please stand for the flagellation?
Mr. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Kate.
Here.
Mrs. Fossey.
Here.
Mr. Mays Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Durok.
Here.
Okay, for solicitor, we have Jeff Ross Reese, Jeff Raze for solicitor. For engineer, we have Scott Room. And code enforcement, we have Chris House. Okay, next, do we have anyone who signed in? Did anyone sign the paper to do the kind of talk?
Yes.
We gotta wait till we get that. Thank you. Okay. Perfect. We're going to do the land consolidation first. So I think it's Ted Schaper.
Yes.
Would you like to go up to the venue, please?
Sure.
Please keep your name and address.
Ted Schaper, eight twenty-one, Pinecrest Drive, Keyswood.
Do you have anything you'd like to talk about, about your property?
Um, just trying to get permission to pull three lots together. Make one person.
Engineer, Scott, was there any issues?
There were a few, they were all very minor. Have we gotten a letter back from Allegheny County?
We have not.
We have not. Okay, we're getting, has that been submitted to me now? It has been, okay. Now, we need that letter back. They may have comments on the plan. You'll need a certification of title, which is in the ordinance. And it's actually in the Allegheny County ordinance. And it would just say that if you don't have a mortgage on the property, or if you do, that your bank signs off on it since you're changing the property.
Okay.
You're not selling anything off, so that should not be a problem. The planning commission clause that they're going to sign off of says that it's approved, but the planning commission just reviews and recommends to the commissioner. So that note has to be changed. That's in the letter that I wrote on November eleventh. Surveyor does have that letter, so he needs to make that change.
What, and the change for the?
Just that the planning commission reviews, recommends, they don't approve. That's all. It's just a simple word. The proof of recording, when they bring the recorder, after recorder in Dean's office, they like to put a date on it, and there's no place for them to put the date and for them to certify. But that was the date. I have on here that you have a deed notification clause. The county may waive that because you're not looking to sell it. You're not selling something off, you're just consolidating. So they, they may waive that. And that's all.
Very minor comment.
Chris, do you have any comments or concerns?
The purpose of the subdivision is to go to residential addition.
Yes, to an additional existing house on one lot that's down there.
Which is in an industrial district, which means he's a grandfathered use. To expand that use, there are two issues at hand, which will be appearing before the zoning area next week. That's the expansion of the grandfathered use, and the fact that he's also a flood dog. All of these require some maintenance, to ensure it's maintained. So if we were to approve the subdivision, what they need to do to the intention?
Thank you, Chris. Well, do you have anything to say either?
No, nothing additional, other than what Chris mentioned.
The commission, does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments?
The sanitary sewer or private line?
David.
Is that sanitary sewer or private line?
Sanitary sewer.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? Make a motion to have this approved on the contention that everything that has been said by both Chris and the solicitor, or excuse me, the engineer, concerns get done and approved. I don't have an issue with the motion.
I'll make the motion approved.
Daniel, I need a second. Tara, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, Chris.
Thank you, everyone, I'm wonderful, you do.
Me too.
Okay, next is the LED sign. What we're going to do is we're going to have a little presentation, and then we'll take comments afterwards. Unless, you think we should comment first? Okay, that's for that. I think it might be better so you can hear the presentation.
All right, so my name is Nick Eldury, everybody can hear me? Okay, great. All right, so what I'm going to be covering is the sign that we've been working on, which is going to go out front of this building here. It's an LED sign, it'll be on a two-foot brick or stone masonry base. The current sign out there now will be tore down. The new existing sign will start about ten feet in from where that one is closer to the building. So, the sign specs for this sign, it's a five-by-eight double-sided sign, so you'll be able to see it either way you come. It's a ten-millimeter pixel pitch, that's the distance from the center of one pixel to the other. The smaller that is, the more high-definition it is. The total display area is a little over two feet by seven feet long. It's full color capability. The minimal character height is two inches, so you can have up to eight lines on it. The max is twenty-four inches, which is just about the height of the sign. And I'm going to open up questions after this short presentation to Jacob. I have him on the line, he's their sales rep through the sign company we're looking at. Any questions that anybody has can go through him.
Well, generally that's directed to the planning. And then what we do is anyone who signs in, they can then come up and ask their questions. We just don't have it open.
No, that wasn't for you. You'll have, yeah, everybody out.
Talking to everyone.
Yeah, everybody out top will have the opportunity to ask any questions. Brightness and everything's going to go through the software, which is, I'll open up to him and let him kind of dodge into that a little bit more. So the Wi-Fi and warranty, it's a wireless communication built for severe weather conditions. It's a fast transmission for up to a thousand feet with a line of sight. So as long as the transmission is in the building here somewhere, can see the sign, it'll transmit. It does that through an outdoor sign antenna, which is included in the end cost, which is in the quote that I have in front of all of you. And that helps protect the files from outside tampering, meaning that without the password to get in, nobody could kind of hack into the sign and upload things that are unwanted. The warranty covers defects in workmanship and materials for the life of the sign. This is everything except the LEDs and the power supply on the actual sign. And that also covers the polyface, which is backlit, that will say Elizabeth Township, and have our logo on it. So they, they work with a mega-cloud software and a free content library. There's no installation needed, it's a login through any internet-based device. It updates automatically with new features available. And it's backed up daily, for instance, access, meaning you won't lose any files that you actually upload to their website. And there's access to over three hundred graphics, which is growing all the time. So the sign-based specs, it'll be two feet high by ten foot wide, which will leave a foot on either side and two foot in depth to leave for the mounting software, with a six-inch overhang on the top. It'll be a stone or brick base, none of these are set in stone yet, these are just some ideas of what it may look like. And then the building, or the, on the bottom left is a render of what it could look like in front of the building. Right now, we have one quote in, which is over the eleven thousand eight hundred and one threshold for just the base, which if that's the case, we will need to get three more quotes. We also, in that, it was a rough estimate, just to get an idea of what it would cost, so the dimensions weren't set in stone on that base, yeah. So that's the information I have on the sign and the base. I'll open it up to you for questions. If it's something that I can answer, I will. If not, Jacob is on the line and can answer any further questions.
I have a question. I just have a question. I know that's just a rendering, and I'm assuming that's based off of where the current sign is, and this one is going to sit back further.
Correct.
Now, you talk about the base and getting, and I know that's two separate things, as you described, the sign itself and then the base. Now, the base that includes running all the electrical and everything to it?
That current quote, the thirteen thousand, is included in that. But like I said, that was a rough estimate on dimensions, just to get an idea. So now we have more set in stone.
And then this, this particular sign, I know that we were instructed to take a drive past all that some of the ones, the one at the high school. Did you guys do that as well?
I personally did not have anything to do with that sign.
But it's the same company?
As far as I don't know, I don't believe that it's the same company. This is a company that I found through my internship and then continued once hired for that.
Same general idea.
Correct. It's the same general idea, though, absolutely.
All right, so the ability to turn it up and down, the brightness?
The brightness.
Because I know a lot of the residents, their concern was, you know, what's it going to look like at nighttime? So will it self-adjust, or will somebody have to manually adjust it?
Do we have, Jake, are you there?
I'm sorry, I'm rambling.
Yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me all right?
We're like, any questions?
Some technical questions.
Yeah, I heard that question, and so to kind of give you guys an idea, the sign brightness, at its highest, it burns at seven thousand five hundred lumens. I'm sorry, seven thousand five hundred nits. It needs to be brighter than the sun to be seen during the day. And if the sun, or if the sun rays enter the atmosphere, they're burning at about four thousand nits. You can set this as low as five hundred nits at nighttime. And you can also set a scheduled dim to happen, so that every, you know, if you want to set it for every day at six P M, for it to dim to five hundred nits, you can set it to do that through the software.
How bright is five hundred nits, Jake?
So it's a little bit hard to kind of get that into perspective, but like, so during the day, you know, at around noon, as the sun rays enter the atmosphere, it's about four thousand nits. And so five hundred nits is going to be, you know, quite a bit lower than that. And it is, five hundred is rated for, or our lowest setting is rated for outdoor nighttime to meet within most communities' threshold for the permit requirements.
Jake, excuse me, Jake. Did you go past, maybe answer this question? You did go past the high school and all to see what's like on the day or night, correct?
I have no answer.
I know, myself, I did do it. I did go during the day, and I did go at night. Excuse me. It wasn't that bad, even though my husband said, he didn't think it was that bad. Yet the illumination is similar to what the sign is at the high school. And then the high school gets up to versus the one that you guys want to put in, which is going to be ground level. I'm guessing that the lighting too will be more reflected down towards the ground? Am I correct?
That is correct. So to kind of also give you an idea, most laptops burn at two hundred to six hundred nits. So you, when it comes to the brightness, so you can get the screen kind of to the middle of that.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No, I don't call me. I drove past that sign today, and I did it at night. And I also went past the country club, and across from the country club, there's a church over there. Has almost identical, and I, you know, I find it hard to believe that there's, it interferes with anybody or anything. It's not that bright or anything.
Does anyone, okay, Mark?
The top part of the sign, internally lit, I presume?
That is correct.
Is that dimmable as well?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is that dimmable as well?
That is not dimmable.
Because it's white, and that's going to be kind of right in there.
Well, the top portion isn't entirely lit, is it? Oh, yes.
It's the top, is the top?
It's backlit.
Okay, just.
It has back, it has backlighting, so there's a lighting cover that goes over top of it. And there's lighting behind it that helps illuminate the sign and the logo.
How far out will illumination go, speed-wise?
For the LED or the top portion?
Everything, the whole thing. Will it be like five foot out, or is it three foot out? I mean, how far out would, no, maybe out.
And you're, you mean how far will the light reach?
Yes.
You know, the, the, we have pictures of up to a hundred people, up to a hundred feet away, looking at the sign, able to see it. I'm not sure if that's what you mean, but we don't have specific, like, how far and how you're raised yet. But people can still see the sign from a hundred feet away.
A hundred feet away, okay. Because I know the residents are concerned, especially the ones who, there's one that lives near the bank is concerned, and right across the street. Will this illumination affect them at all?
It should not, especially at nighttime, you know, that is a concern that comes up a lot. Especially, you know, a lot of the work that we do specifically are with churches, and a lot of churches tend to be in neighborhoods with houses fairly close by. And so do we allow, or we make sure that, you know, when you are giving the LED portion itself, that, you know, it's getting to a low enough nit rating that when, you know, people are driving by at nighttime, they're not, you know, letting it out as soon as they're running into the church itself, that wouldn't, you know, be a good product. And would be quite a customer service nightmare if you put it out there.
Does anybody else on the panel have anything more to say? I think it might be a good time, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, my only thing is about the base, the two feet high, it's probably going to look like it's sitting in a hole, since the property drops off the edge of the red. And I'm assuming that you have it, the actual base is going to be a total of five feet, total of two feet, to get a blue cross on it.
Or it'll be, we'd set it three high, once the, once the sign's actually on.
No, it's just the base.
The base will be two feet off the ground.
But it's going to be buried three feet anywhere.
Yes, two feet will be sticking out of the ground.
Usually it's like triangle, when you're driving a vehicle, they calculate it at thirty-six inches to your eye line. So if you want it to be at eye level in a vehicle, you should be, the base part would be at least two foot above the ground.
The base is adjustable, we can adjust the height for the base, that's not set in stone. You know, that, this was more for just to get an idea of what the base will look like. This is more for the sign itself with Jacob, who we're purchasing. This would be a kind of a different purchase. This isn't through the same company.
Yeah, because the base wants a little higher than two feet.
Correct.
Well, when the plan says three, and that says.
In the picture, it shows. Okay, I mean, I think at this time, we can have the citizens talk about the LED signs. I believe all of them, all this one. Carl? Okay, so, Mark?
Yeah.
Give your name, and I think you spoke last time you were here.
Hang on, Mark's Doorjack?
Nick, he needs your.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mark's Doorjack, five thirteen Rock Run, right across the street. I just have a concern about the sign. Don't think it's really neat here, I don't know what you guys want to use it for. We aren't advertising anything, selling anything here. I don't think it's a bigger neighborhood or residential neighborhood. Kind of like the way it is. I ain't a lot, other than, I think, saying going here. I do have concerns about the lighting. I mean, they can tell me anything they want, but the nits are, it doesn't matter at all. So I see a sign in front of the building, it's going to tell me if it's. I'd like your help. And the other thing, who's going to see here? People ride the River Vista or the golfers? The golfers only live, most of them don't even live here. And what, where do we advertise out there? This is the township building.
Well, I could be wrong, but Nick, they can advertise, like, say, meetings, like, for tonight.
The meetings are all set. Mark, your meetings are usually set for, say, seven o'clock on Wednesday night, certified in a month.
True, but we don't have a meeting every month. It depends if we have something on the agenda. So it could be closed, we could put on a closed. I mean, I'm just saying.
I understand, yes, I understand, but it's just, to me, I don't think it's a meeting here, that's, you know. And according to some of your ordinances, it's going to change, you know, how it's going to work.
Well, they have to, they have to comply with the ordinance.
Right, that's, I mean.
Under the LED and under service, they can't.
I've never seen anything for LED in the ordinances. At all, I mean, I've never seen anything LED in the ward, since I've seen billboards. I don't want, I don't want to get involved, I really don't. I've never seen anything for LED signs in residential area. It's all just regular lighting, backlit. It says internal illumination, which is LED, you know. Say, and LED can go range so much different.
No, I could probably, I could be wrong, Jeff, but don't we have a limit on how bright something can be? Or it can't go out in the sky?
According to the ordinance, it can get, which, I don't even know what point two foot candles is, but it says point two foot candles from the property line, as much as it can put out, that's already anything.
That's if we require some objective measurement, right, a lighting or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, point two foot candles is hardly anything. I don't think that LEDs would be that, really, though.
Does he know if it is or isn't?
Pardon me?
Does he know if it is or isn't?
Jake, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the question.
But the illumination from the property line, in foot candles, what's it going to be? Not me understanding.
I'm having a hard time, still here.
He wants to know what illumination is in the way of foot candles. At the property line.
In the way of foot candles?
Yes.
I'm not quite sure of the question, but just to kind of, just to kind of give you guys an idea, just to make sure anyone can understand the brightness of the LED itself. When you guys set it at its lowest, it'll be at five hundred nits, which is as low as, like, an iPad would be. So you can set the brightness down very low.
Do you understand what he's saying?
I guess I could, and once you're going down that low, but it's.
I mean, would that be?
It's going with you need to do.
We're here for the purpose of the sign. We're here for the aesthetic, and to give you that on there.
I just don't think it needs to be out here. Nobody else in the world here has it, and what we do, what you guys do, if you do, I mean, it just keeps on snowing, and this person wouldn't want one, and that's all. I just don't think it needs to be in this, in that residential neighborhood. And I thank you for your time, and if we have any personal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the placement solidified? I mean, that is something that, if the sign goes in, it is ultimately coming in that spot?
No, it's going to move back.
No, I mean, like, right here on property, it wasn't considered placement on other spots in the township, but.
Just here, it's not going to go.
Yes, this is the location we got for this, this purchase.
Steve?
All right, you go across the side. Just yelling. All right, good evening. Steve Raskowski, I'm the six oh four Rock Run, right on one corner. I'm here with the arrest of the immediate neighbors of this building that would be directly affected by the construction of this proposed LED jumbotron-style sign in our front yards. Now, in the beginning of this process, us neighbors had two primary concerns, which was cost and taxes, and the blinking and additional lights and the aesthetics in the neighborhood. Now, it seems as though the cost issue may have been handled, although the price figures keep fluctuating, of course, these meetings. Commissioners claim that there will be no tax increases next year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So let's take care of that issue. Simply specify our concerns, the aesthetics and lighting, we would like to outline the following. We would like a new sign, because that was pretty bad shape, with a similar footprint, similar lighting and display properties as the existing sign, i.e. a fixed base, non-moving monument-type display like we have now, but no direct light projected from the sign, only reflected light projected from the sign due to the ground mounted floodways, which are there now. And most importantly, we don't want any blinking lights or movable displays of any type, whether it be LED, LCD, OLED, halogen, jumbotron style, or anything internally lit, backlit, like what some of what's proposed. Now, we propose a sign that looks exactly like or similar in style to this one here, which is actually similar in fashion to the one that was proposed in light, with the exception that there is no of the LED TV-type display on it. This sign is similar in style to the sign at the entrance to the middle school nearby, which is kind of what we based it off of. Reiterating, we have no actual use for a moving-type message jumbotron-type sign, exactly zero. Elizabeth Township has existed just fine since about seventeen eighty-eight without one. Now, this will be the third meeting on this matter, with one hundred percent project opposition on all three meetings from residents, a hundred percent. That rare type of unanimous agreement these days begs the question, why are we still even having this discussion? We don't want the jumbotron-style sign at all. Tonight, us neighbors were asking for a vote to officially formally deny the original proposal of a new sign of an illuminated movable message-type jumbotron-style LED sign. It's just time. As a show of good faith as your neighbors, we ask for a second vote tonight approving a new sign with stipulations that it will not be a blinking-type sign of any kind. It will not be of the jumbotron TV style, and it will not create any new additional light, blinking, or stationary. We ask for this vote so our officials can proceed with replacing the old sign or repairing it, but probably replacing it. We would be happy to answer any questions or concerns we have, and look forward to working with you further in the future. Thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. We ask for this vote so our officials can proceed with replacing the old sign or repairing it, but probably replacing it. We would be happy to answer any questions or concerns we have and look forward to working with you further in the future. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Real quick, where is your residence to the building here?
Arrow.
Are you directly across?
No, I'm I'm at the Arrow and Rock Run right on the corner.
Oh, so you're down towards the bank area.
Yes, this uh proposed uh sign would be directly flashing at my house.
First of all, there's no flashing. It's not permitted. So you're not gonna worry about flashing or moving.
I didn't hear that part because I see a lot of flashing L E D signs uh...
When it flashes, it just goes on to the next whatever next um...
Well, that's a light flash and that's...
That's a light flash.
But it's not a moving. They're not allowed to have moving. It's not permitted in the ordinance.
I'm not sure what the legal definition or redefinition is what we're...
What's what's we're trying to say is...
We don't want neither is what we're saying, like as far as that goes.
Okay.
Um you know, if that answers that question?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
How many feet did you say it was gonna be stepped out to now?
It'll be uh it'll where that one ends closest to the building, that's where the new one will begin. And that's around ten or eleven feet.
I know it isn't actually trying to get out towards the right.
Which is no matter what the sign will be, eventually the idea is to get it out of that blind spot and off of the road a little bit. That was one of the very first whole questions in the discussion, so.
Does anybody else have any questions, concerns, or comments to either Nick or Jake about the sign? Okay, I um Jeff, if I'm right or wrong, unless you can answer me, um we really can't reject the sign per se. All we are as the commission is that we can give recommendations. So um I know myself I would like to make sure that the lighting stays low and it's downward um and it's back, which they've already addressed all three of those. Is there anything else anybody else would like to address with this?
Also put a hood on it.
A hood?
A hood on it.
I mean almost like a little roof on there.
Well, just a hood so that like from neighbor across the street there might end up getting some uh light light emissions from it so if there was a hood on it to more or less direct the light straight ahead.
Let me ask you Nick, where the new sign would be at? Would that be parallel to where they're gonna be putting the fencing up over there where the mainest building's at?
Correct, that was another point to be made.
Now, is that gonna be a solid type fence or is it gonna be like a chain link fence? Do you know what kind of fencing?
I could answer that. It's a it's an eight-foot fence, high fence with privacy slots in touch on chain link.
So it shouldn't interfere with the house?
It's gonna be exactly where the the paved parking area is there. It'll go the circumference of that uh square.
It's possible. Some sign might show up, but sign.
It's possible.
Okay. Just wanted to get that clarified because I didn't know that they were gonna do something. I just didn't know what. So thank you, by the way, for coming to the...
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Um so uh does anybody else have any other recommendations that we can have this go forward now? Mark?
I'm I'm concerned by the time of the morning of the day. Does the sign can the sign be even turned off?
I think that's completely programmable at this point.
So I mean that's that's maybe...
So it can be turned off, correct?
And Jacob, that might be more likely, but it should be.
Say say again, I'm sorry?
Can the sign be turned off at any point?
Yes, if the if you guys want nothing to be displayed on the sign, if you guys wanna turn it off, you can do that.
I mean possibly a recommendation to set up some sort of curfew for the moving portion of it. I mean that's a question. I have looked at these signs. They don't seem to put off that much light if they're set properly. Uh I do have one near my house so I've really been mindful of it, looking at it. Initially when they put it in, yeah, it was really bright and then they got the niche of it and toned it down and it's it's again, I don't live across the street from it. So I'm just saying, I've been real mindful of looking at them, so I'm mindful of what you're trying to say. Um if maybe there could be a recommendation on some sort of curfew on movement. The sign itself is pretty self-explanatory. I have no more questions about the sign. And if this is about approving the sign, it meets our requirements and we have to then pass it on. But as a recommendation, could there maybe be some wiggle room for a a type of curfew for the moving portions of it?
That's what I said. We could do motions to go forward to the commissioners saying um we don't have an issue with the design. It needs all our requirements. Um the only recommendations would be lowering down the lightage at night, make sure the movement is either stagnant at night, solid, not moving.
Or at least that's a certain time.
Well, yeah, now's a certain time, maybe seven o'clock or eight o'clock. Um I think that's reasonable.
Jake, you still there Jake?
Yes, sir.
Is the change rate adjustable and if so, what's that like?
Yeah, so when you go into the software and program the sign, there are what are called campaigns. Um and each campaign consists of up to a hundred different slides or animations, whatever you guys wanna upload or use from our library. You can set them to change as quickly as one second, so each graphic displays in one second, all the way up to them staying on the screen for a hundred seconds if that's how much you wanna leave on it. They're normally set um to six seconds. That's our recommendation of how long you should leave uh content, but of course you guys can change that as much as you like.
Up to close to two minutes, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And that's just leaving the that's just leaving one piece of content on there and um you know the next piece of content can come on, but you can also switch it for as quick as one second.
Okay, one other question. I think you already answered this, but I'm gonna ask it anyhow again. Um I have seen L E D lights after like a year or two where half of it will go it will just disappear. You'll see part of the warranty and nothing on the other. What is the warranty and what it and what would happen with that?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, was that out there?
No, that's not just just said. What would what kind of warranty is that? Because that has happened. I've seen that numerous times where you'll see a sign, half of it's lit and the other half is not there because it's not working.
Yeah, so we offer a three-year warranty on the parts that look the electronic pullers, circuit board, the L E D panel assemblies. Um it covers the in-factory labor um from the shipping. Uh and of course after that, you guys can still contact us for parts if necessary. Um if one of those panels needs to be replaced uh or and rent that. Um and of course we will also walk you guys through any sort of you know if a panel does need to be replaced, uh we will walk you guys through how to take a panel off and stick the new one on.
That that'd probably be a very good idea so that after the warranty, someone would know how to fix it. Um okay, I think you've answered my questions. Um I need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, two other questions?
I just wasn't questioning the comment. My my sister lives right across from my school and we were approaching the sign, seeing it all the time. She doesn't even notice the sign. It's more the apartment, the apartment lot itself is more of an abstraction than the sign.
Yeah, that's true. It's important like it's really...
Right.
They have something going on. Um okay, um I think at this time I think a motion to have this carried forward to the commissioners with the recommendation, what we mentioned about the um illumination.
Hey Kathy, I have one comment to ask the public out there. I don't know how long they've lived there, but when we had the ice skating rink out there and you had those big floodlights with the generators, everybody all night long. Did anybody have anything to say about that that that?
I will say something. Do you know mine?
Real quick.
Okay. As far as that, uh we were never even told anything like that was going wrong here and then they put a generator out that ran, lights on it in front of my house for eight hours a day. No, I didn't say anything. Your kids out there. What am I gonna what am I gonna say? I wasn't even told it was gonna be put there. Yes, I had a problem with it, but I ain't gonna come cry about having kids out here and you guys do have other places you could have put that. Yes, I did have a problem with the lights. I couldn't sleep at night. Is that in question? There you go. But I wasn't going to be the neighbor to cause a problem, alright?
No, I understand. No, I understand. Um okay, once again, um we'll have this go forward to the commissioners under the recommendations about radiation, about the lighting and about um when they should have stationary warning. That sounds correct, good for everyone? Okay, I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Now, I need a second. David, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good, ayes have it. And now, should we do this motion again? Okay, Carl, do you wanna talk? Is he here? Carl, are you here? Do you wanna talk tonight or do you wanna wait since he's at the table?
Uh we're gonna have to talk. We don't want to wait.
You wanna talk?
Sure.
All right, mother, have a great rest of your night.
Okay, Jeff, thank you.
Happy birthday, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Just give your name and address and reason for your opinion. Thank you, by the way.
Of course.
Hello, Merry Christmas. Uh my name's Carl Shunk out of the one one two zero East Smithfield Street, uh Eastward. Uh looking to I was back here in September with some consolidation plans. I had two lots and two lots and I wanted to put them together. Uh so there was a couple changes on the drawing. They had those changes made. It's been resubmitted, so uh just wanted to see if I could get that passed or...
Are you doing that?
Yeah, no, it's always on the...
Uh so there were numerous technical issues you may remember. This is the one that was divided by the power trail. So he's turned in a new plan. They seem to have been addressing. I don't know that if uh who Jeff passes along and give the engineers approval. That's something that's gonna be catastrophized based on that.
We don't have anything.
Best trade to come back.
Yeah, I think that's to come back next time.
No, no worries. Yeah, no, I understand. I kind of thought that was the case.
It's gonna have to be re 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 reviewed.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Have a Merry Christmas, a great evening. Um is there anybody else who wanna talk? Any more discussions? Is gonna need a motion for German? Mark, second, angle on, favor, say aye? Aye. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.